You run out of cards.
Can you see if there's anybody else?
I'll probably take my cell up.
Here come the sheriff.
Yeah.
We can't have a missing without the sheriff.
I gotta go, I'm gonna be gone.
Is there anyone coming in that would like to make a public comment outside of what's already on the agenda?
Where is the word of the county?
Are you referring to Shallow Road? Mr. Dupree withdick his application late version, and so there will be no public hearing on that matter.
Well, that's good here.
We're trying to contact as many people as we can by different people that have called and emailed in and sent out emails and phone calls to try to get it out to everybody.
Yeah, it's been...
Yeah.
I answered a bunch of emails about it.
Do you feel well, Dean?
Totally.
No.
He's not a presenter, and this is our building department that he was...
And now we're starting.
Sheriff, how you doing today? What is...
Mommy's worst days.
What do we need?
We couldn't start.
The turnip field, yeah, we're going, but I...
No, really?
I was just listening. Ain't living like he was hoping that I'm calling.
Okay.
Now...
Yeah. I emailed, answered a bunch of people's emails saying that you'd been...
Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, board meeting to order July 7th, about five minutes after 7:00 at this time. Craig Slay, would you lead us in invocation, please?
Thank you, Father, for being with us. We thank you for this time of year. We consider the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, we consider the sacrifice that was made so that we can assemble together to conduct the county's business. Father, we consider that we are worthy of that sacrifice by accommodating ourselves and considering ourselves, Father, to be blessed than those around us, Father, in a way that elevates their needs and, Father, that provides for them what they need. Father, thank you for the many blessings of this county and how you have abundantly blessed it. Father, I pray that you'll give these gentlemen what...
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Okay, at this time, do we have any public comments or recognitions? Okay. With all businessmen's approval of June 13, 2014.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Judy Fortenberry. There you are. Consent agenda items. Trying to jump ahead.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Johnson. Any... Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now, Ms. Judy Fortenberry. I just want to see if you were moving.
I just paid attention, right?
Give you time to get up here.
That's right. I have two requests to void tax sales. One is, A, is the 2013 tax sale and refund the tax sale purchaser for PIN number 55332. His property was in bankruptcy and shouldn't have gone through...
Approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The second one is to void the 2012 and 2013 tax sales and refund the tax sale purchaser for PIN number 76402. The same thing was in bankruptcy. And you're probably wondering why we have these. Sometimes we don't get those...
The chancellor clerk sends out notices that they're about to, you know, go lose their property. They pick up on this and send us the notice that it was in bankruptcy.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What's the difference in where everybody comes in, bids on pieces of property that haven't paid your taxes, and then a piece of property that is sold off the courthouse steps? Is there a difference?
Well, this is sold for taxes. That is probably sold by the banks that, you know, that's all the property.
It's all where the people have lost their property, you know, not paying their notes.
Not paying their mortgage or stuff.
Yeah. If, like, somebody would go see some, sell it, give the person some of the money in the mountain, give the owner what's left over.
Because you remember, I'm not selling property. I'm selling taxes. It'd be...
Property versus taxes.
Right. We sell taxes and interest.
Got you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. Mr. John Sullivan. Oh, we've got a pin shooter.
Might be an upgrade.
That's right. I am not John Sullivan. But we have three items on the agenda today. The first one is a petition for change in assessments on the 2013 real and per...
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, we have a petition for the adjustment of the 2013 homestead exemption supplemental role.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Third and final is a request... ...for real and personal property assessment roles and accept a written objections on Monday, October 4, 2014.
August 4, August.
August 4, 2014, at 9 o'clock, okay? And to set a public hearing for the August 15, 2014, at 9 o'clock, and the authority to publish and...
Okay.
I make a motion approved. I'd like you to explain to me. I'm just curious what that is.
Got a motion. Let's get a motion and second on that. Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr...
We're about to open the roles. If anybody has a question on what we're going to tax them on for next year, this is the speak now for ever-hold-your-peace moment, okay? This is the time that we want them to come in and work with us. If there's something wrong with what we've got, we give them the opportunity to come in and say, hey, this doesn't look right. Help me out here. This is, you know...
Right.
To make sure our roles are correct. So this is their time to speak up.
That's basically what the little notice we got in the mail was about.
Right.
That's the way it kind of read, and I was curious. Okay.
This is, if you have a problem with this value, speak now.
So do they only have the one day, the Monday, August 4, for written objections?
For their... They need to get the...
Right.
They have to request the objection, okay?
Right.
But then, after, we have that month there to work on it, to figure out, you know, there could be a typo, there could be anything. There could be a house that burned. There could be something out there that we need to adjust or work on, you know? So this is the time to do it.
Okay.
The taxpayers will also have the opportunity to provide their own assessment of their property as a counterpoint to any assessment that Johnson's office has done.
And then we'll make the recommendation to y'all, and you will approve or disapprove.
They have an objection back. What do they turn it in?
They're gonna turn it in.
I think you need to let them know.
If you have an objection, you have to see the chancellor, attorney, the chancellor clerk.
If you bring them to my office, you have a rejection so we can get a program book in.
Got you. Okay.
It needs to be in writing. That's very important.
Very important.
And in order that there would be a record.
Right.
They are arguing and asserting, and this board will receive those written objections at the appropriate time, probably in the...
Hmm, okay.
All right.
Yep. Good. Asked that clearly. Thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. Mr. Dale Westbrook's road manager. Good morning. That road work accomplished for June 2014.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Dale, on the, I know we've had wet season and stuff. We catching up on the right of ways and getting everything pretty much taken care of?
Yeah, we're good. Race just growing pretty fast.
Faster than you can cut it.
Every week.
I see the mayor back there shaking his head, yes. I guess that's happening in the city, too, so... How many actual mowers do we have out there in the county that we cut with?
We're running six.
Six?
Yeah, six big mowers. Now, we don't have small side clipper mowers.
Right. Got a motion and a second. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
First item I have on the agenda is recommend approval of a utility permit for telepathic network along and across Highway 469 and installed between Florence Elementary and Holly Hill Drive.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is request approval of a utility permit for Fannin Water Association to install a water line along and across Highway 471, that's old Highway 471, and install between Caledonian Boulevard and Gablewood Drive.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Third item I have on the agenda is our Wicklow Storm Drainage Improvements, and this morning to Parkman Woodard Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $18,576.76, and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, which is my last item on the agenda, is our physical... Inspection. As you know, we go through bridge inspections every year, and I have the project number BR, NBIS 081B, and it's on in all system bridges. And this morning, I'm recommending approval of the program, the agreement, and the project order, and authority to execute the documents because all the supervisors have to sign this. Bishop is absent, but we need to get that in. We're always one of the first counties that state aid comes to to get our bridges done. Of course, we have so many bridges, it's well over 100 bridges that we've got...
100 this year?
Yes, sir. I believe this year it's 104 regular inspection, and then we have six or seven sky inspections. So there's several things involved in it, but it's a lot of bridges, and it takes a period of time, and it goes through a state aid program, which they've had problems with. I won't go into that, but just like the one that we... We finally got it finalized through state aid in the spring of this year.
Right.
We get the inspections done, but there are a lot of other things in the system that has to go through for approval.
When you say state aid, are those bridges just on state aid roads, or that's every bridge?
It's just bridges.
Bridges in general.
Bridges, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's just bridges, and it's of no cost to the...
So if there's a bridge out there, now, we just do county, or do we actually get into municipalities also on that?
Oh, it covers some of the municipal bridges, too.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier, remember?
Right.
The municipality, ones that tend to be small ones.
Right. Okay.
We just don't do the state and federal.
Right.
Right.
I have a motion to approve on this?
So moved.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Buster. Mr. Craig Slay, board attorney.
First item on the agenda under my section is a public hearing on the Daniel Jenkins conditional use request, 2240 Almar Road. This is District 1, proper... There is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Daniel Jenkins conditional use request? Anyone? Mr. President, I want to start by thanking our Office of Community Development for hearing my plea about the words on the page being too small. Renee's fixed that for me. I feel like I'm reading my memo in the Bible here. She's responsive. Daniel Jenkins is requesting a conditional use to convert an existing 20 by 24 building into a small apartment for his daughter on the property located at 2240 Almar Road. Like, one acre parcel sewn RE1A. Mr. Jenkins has already received approval from the State Department of Health to install the sewer system. So at this time, there's no opposition, unless you guys have any questions. I think it'd be appropriate to take a motion.
I make motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Mr. President, the other item is to set a public hearing for August 4, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. for James Alford-Nathan Barum conditional use with dimensional variance request at 1584 Old Fannin Road, District 2 parcel.
That's on the, is that on the shooting range?
Yes, sir. That's correct. That would be the shooting range.
From what I understand, now, how does it... A little bit, from what I understand, I just got this Friday, it sounds like Nathan Barum is pulling out from, I guess they were going in together, so how does that... Information on that or whatever, how does that, is that gonna do any...
I think we would, it would be appropriate to go ahead and set the hearing. We need to confirm exactly what is the status of the application.
Okay.
If Mr. Barum is no longer going to participate, then we need to simply confer with Mr. Alford that he does intend to move forward with his application.
Okay. Yeah, I just got this information Friday, so...
Okay. If Mr. Alford... Developments, then we'll simply have it removed from the August 4 agenda.
Okay. So I have a motion to set that public hearing?
Since it's on the west side of Old Fannin Road, I make a motion for Jake.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Craig. J.K. Stringer, county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item, just like to call to the board's attention and also have it in the record that our attorney, along with Ms. Fortenberry and her collection agency during the first nine months of this year, fiscal year, has collected 2,200... Eight cents in lequent personal property taxes from over 30 separate taxpayers. And additionally, a number of these taxpayers have obligated themselves to pay additional 88... This is just a job, I think, well done.
Oh, yeah.
Bringing money that's supposed to be in the coffers into the coffers.
Right.
Thank you.
That's great, that's great news.
Great sharing that.
Well, not only that, that, you know, whenever teamwork like that went together, that's very astounding, whenever we get everyone working together to make sure that people pay their fair share like everyone else does, so...
Mr. President.
Okay. Additional business to be discussed. One thing I want to bring up, and I don't want to bring up a subject too dramatic, you know, whenever we don't see the committee here, because, you know, I was able to look at the, I guess, the multipurpose building from what the committee brought to us on Thursday, is that correct? I guess... And I want to see if Craig and maybe Mr. Stringer could get back with the committee along with Jared and see if...
I'm part of the committee.
Yeah, part of the committee, if y'all could get with them, because I was hoping that they could bring more detail, you know, instead of just, you know, very small.
What do you want?
Well, you know, it really was just... Didn't get any answer on how much money that they were expecting the county to put in more money towards, you know, improving this or what, and I know they did save fencing and bringing about a manager and possibly three part-time employees. Didn't see in there anywhere where it was, you know, will still be basically opening it up for... Selling for free, you know, if they're from Rankin County. That's, I mean, that's how I got it. And, of course, there was a couple people that were talking on behalf of that, so it kind of was misleading on, didn't see a clear-cut picture. Now, that's just my view, you know, I didn't, and I may be speaking just for me, but I did look at it, and that's, that's part of my business, I guess, as far as renting facilities. Potatoes of how this was going to be moved forward or what their recommendations were.
Why you ask them that while they're here?
Well, it's kind of like they threw it on us, and then all of a sudden, they want us to ask...
And I think some of it is, they didn't want to be the ones to tell you how to run it. They wanted to give an overlook of all of it, and then didn't want to look like they were coming in and setting a format of this is the way we want it run. But if you, I think that's fine. We can meet with them again and, or get word to them, and... What you all do is kind of write down some things, kind of what you want, and then see what comes of that.
Right.
But I think they're willing to do that. I don't think they, I think they felt like, from my, Greg, y'all, Stringer's correct and wrong, they kind of didn't want to feel like they were overstepping some of their grounds by looking like they were running it.
Right.
You know? And so they wanted to be... Willing to help in any way. So, but no, if you'll make a list of some of the things that you would like them to address, I think to be more than willing to do that.
Now, I know, you know, we're going into budget, and we're going into budget time, so it's kind of a broad situation of, you know, we as a board, we're going to have to make some hard and fast decisions on what, what we're going...
There was some, just discussion as it is, and, you know, I told them that, basically what you just said, I said, you know, we, we got the budget coming up. We don't have anything, there's nothing set aside in the budget.
And that's where I think that I was looking for, maybe some answers from them, because, you know, them being the, I guess, of course, I had a lot of, like they said, they had a lot of experience in that, so they, you know, by all means, I was hoping for more meat and potatoes to give us something to go off of, you know, to at least elaborate. Not only the budget, you know, is it, is it a necessity, or is it just a want, you know? How do we, how do we enforce, you know, on one facility, you know, where we charge one facility on certain things, and then the other facilities, we don't, you know?
What do you mean by that?
Well, you know, it's, it's like, whenever they, and I was trying to make sure that I did understand this, that if you did pull... If you got out with your horse, if you're from Rankin County, that you basically rode for free, you know, if there's no scheduled...
Just for practices?
Right, practices and stuff like that. So, you know, it's, there's all kind of different ways to curb that, and I think whenever you reinvest in your, in your facilities, you definitely offset some costs, you know, and I'm just saying that there are some... Counter reinvesting back into your facilities, where I keep going back to that, because if we keep giving stuff away for free, then surely all the money's going towards keeping it up and everything else. But if you don't reinvest and at least charge something, then...
So that's what you need to do, write down then, because what you'd like to see is them charge anybody that walked, came in there.
Right, I mean, that's...
Then you need... At it, because I think, I think, basically, they're, I think what they're saying, the way I understood it, they didn't want to, they're not charging, they're going to charge Rankin County if they're using the facility as an event.
Right.
Or something, but if they were just exercising their horse.
Right.
Then they, they weren't going to charge Rankin County person to just exercise their horse. And, but they would, anybody that was not from Rankin County. And I forget, it seemed like, I don't have it in front of me, didn't they say, like, they were... For like $50 an hour, or $50 or some, what, run an hour?
Well, see, that's where it was kind of confusing. I didn't understand if it was just them pulling off the street and doing that like that, or that's where it was, because when I went back and reread the entire book, I did say it was kind of confusing on what, you know, and...
Well, I think you need to put some pointers, things that you're...
And then let's address it, and then let them come back in here, and we'll, we'll
meet again, and then let them evaluate some of it, like you're talking about, and then come back in here, and then have you a list of questions that you'd like answered if they don't answer everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and not only myself, but, you know, the rest of the board, you know, if you can think of anything, because, you know, again, as... Be about some of the things that I was hoping for, that the committee would come forward with, but, and again, that was just my opinion, but, you know, whether the rest of the board felt like that, but I think that we definitely need to have some clear understanding, especially for Laura and Hoopie, so we can work on the budget. I mean, that's a, that's a big piece coming up.
Okay.
Other than that...
Speaking of managers, I think I'd be inclined to make a motion if we authorize Hoopie to start advertising for a manager for the facility.
The only thing there, I think, did we, coming up with a, I guess, actually what type of manager we... Job description, and, I mean, it was a very, it changed somewhat when the, with what the sheriff's doing with the inmates and all, some of that changed, and I think that's, I think you're right, but I think we need, I don't know exactly what the complete, what the job description be, exactly.
Well, and I talked to Hoopie over the weekend. He's going out of town this... Worried about is putting together a job description, and I'm sure that's going to be the last thing on your...
Well, I don't see why they're rushing doing it today, even though it is.
While you're out there on your vacation, can you be putting it...
No, I don't know why we need to worry about doing it today, anyway.
No, I mean, I...
Well, we, at some point, you got to do that. I can't go out with it until I have the authority to do it.
That's right.
And I really can't, and in that authority, have to have some sort of... Now, as I've thought through this thing, and as I've said before, I, I think about this throughout the night many times, this doggone place out there. But the, I don't know how much, with the sheriff taking over the safe room, it's certainly going to help a lot dissolve the issue of what we do at the safe room, which was always a question.
And the maintenance.
And will help with the maintenance of the pavilion.
Right.
But quite frankly, we don't pay hardly any money on the maintenance of the pavilion now, as far as dollars out, it's all in cash already. I will agree that the maintenance will be much better done, but done, so as far as the outlays, I don't know if that's going to result in any savings. the outlays, I don't know if that's going to result in any savings in outlays from the pavilion. Now, from the pavilion, also the management of the pavilion, that's going to require a manager, regardless, you know, the sheriff will take care of the safe room. So we're still-
Right.
... some numbers, and they're numbers off the top of my head. Well, they're not. They're numbers I've researched, all right? We probably are going to end up spending in the neighborhood of some $135,000 a year on salaries out there.
Just-
That's a manager, that's an assistant, okay? And then that's ability to keep what you call the rangers.
Right.
If you're going to control that place every day, you're probably going to have to control that place for about 14 hours a day, which means you're going to have to keep those rangers there for-
Right.
... about 300 days out of a year. So all of that adds up to about $135,000. And then you're going to have at least another $100,000 probably in other costs, which about half of that will be utilities.
Well, utilities, and you've got all kind of, you know, you've got toilet paper, you've got incidentals-
That's what I'm talking about.
You've got dirt, you've got all kind of stuff that you've got the incidentals-
That's what I'm talking about. We, the best that I can figure is that if we're very fortunate, we may take in income there of about $150,000 a year. Okay? Now, that's my, then we're spending about 235,000, 250,000 a year. That's off the, that's the research and the numbers that I have put together. Now, that-
Right.
... to consider is that all of this is discretionary money. And in tough times, which they will come about again, discretionary money is the first money that's looked at. I think that the committee can very well weigh in on these numbers. I don't have any problems with that. But I think they're pretty realistic numbers. Remember, the example that was used as being a top-class facility is the facility in Meridian. Their budget is $400,000 a year, and their income is $100,000 a year. And that, you know, probably, I'm trying to get another $50,000 a year above and beyond what they rent, and they brag about how their facility is used all the time.
Right.
So the only thing I'm saying is that this is a, will be a service that is being provided by the county-
Right.
-to these people, at a cost. This place is not going to break even.
No, it never, you know, it really never will.
It wasn't intended to. You're right.
Yeah, it's not going to break even. So, but, but fine. That's my input today.
Yeah, we knew that from the beginning.
Or we as the board are going to have to make some tough decisions on which direction we need to take if we're going to put more money into it over what we're already doing, and which direction we do need to take on this. And it's coming quick. So the reason why I'm bringing this up today is because I know that budget is just around the corner. We can't just say, well, let's hold off, and let's hold off, and let's hold off because the- Make some tough decisions.
Yeah, but you know, the thing is, it's a kind of, we're going to, we're not going to do anything with it, because, I mean, it's not going anywhere, because, look, you know, there was talk about doing some of that one and building another one, but if you built another one, you're just jumping over, doing the exact same thing if you built another one.
Right.
So, I mean, if you've got the same problem, even if you look at-
Right.
So, you know, I think you need to, like I say, my suggestion to you would be to put together some things, the question and answers you want, and things that you were expecting the committee to do, and that's good. I think it's a good thing that they came in here the other day and presented that, and then it gives you a chance to, gave you a chance over the weekend to talk about it and think about it, whatever, and come up with what you wanted to. Let's work together. Yeah, that's, like I say, work in progress.
Right. Okay. All right, any more additional business? Okay. I'll entertain a motion recess until July 15, 2014, 9:00 a.m. Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Yeah.
He said we got-
Yeah.
He said we got-
Yeah.
He said we got-
Yeah.
So that, that, that's probably, gets to 250.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's a Mississippi note.
Yeah. It's words, all, everything is kind of-